Six two, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve adopting board policy. Two point one five to two point zero, employee fundraising.
This just reinforces, we already have similar language in policy, but this just specifically reinforces that any time an employee wants to raise money, whether it is for an organization or whether it's for their classroom, and no matter how they want to do that, that that fundraising request has to come before the Board of Education. That they cannot go to GoFundMe, set up an account for classroom supplies, and then have people contribute to that and then get classroom supplies. Or I guess they can do it, but if they do it, then they're in violation of board policy.
Okay, do I have an emotion for six point two?
Well, just a second. So any group that wants to raise money, any group, has to come before us before they can do it?
If they're school employees, or if they're raising money for a student group, and David, that's always been that way. I mean, that is basic state law and board policy on fundraising. If you're gonna, if you're gonna raise money for the wrestling organization, for the, for our wrestling team, you guys approve that. Whether it's, whether it's the students raising the money, or whether it's the Wrestling Booster Club raising the money. When you go out and use our name to raise funds, you, the Board of Education has to approve that.
Is there anything in there that blocks us from going out and raising money to these people? If they come before us? Is my question?
No. You have, you can approve any fundraiser you want to approve. Now, we have guidelines, and when those have to be turned in, we require those organizations to submit and audit every year of their books, okay? So no, I mean, they, you guys can approve anything. There's some laws, you know, you're not gonna have a, I don't remember now, Brenda, where are we now on, on like raffles and stuff? Can we do those or not?
There's some big corporations in Oklahoma trying to pass money out to the schools to help with the budget crunch. Are we saying that can't be done?
No. No. That's a gift, and that goes through gifts and endowments. So anybody can come in, they can walk in the door tomorrow and give us $25,000. What we're talking about is when, when somebody says that, "I want you to contribute to me because I'm a classroom teacher in the Ponca City School System, and my students need A, B, C, D." Or, "I want you to, to give a donation," or "I want you to buy barbecue," or "I want you to buy fireworks to support the Student Council," or "to support cheerleaders," or "to support the football team," or "do anything else," and they're using either our students or our name to raise money. And again, guys, that's basic state law. It's been that way for years.
So they can't do that?
No. But you, but your policies back that up. You have, you have board policy that informs those organizations that that's the way they have to do things. When Brenda meets with them in the fall every year, she goes through that Booster Club activity fundraising book, and it has all those rules and regulations in it.
So if ACT puts together and says, "We want to raise $1,000 for our classroom," that would go through Brenda, come to us for approval?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it could happen.
Yeah, sure. It can happen.
But if that's not done before school, then they can't do it for another year.
Yeah, they can amend those budgets any time. Now, we try to get them to do it before school. We think, we think they ought to know what they're gonna do. They ought to plan. You know, they, they shouldn't just all of a sudden decide that they want to do something. We, we think that planning ought to go on. A lot of the fundraisers, they do require contracts with outside organizations. If you sell cookie dough, you're gonna have a contract with whoever the cookie dough company is, and it's gonna specify what you're gonna sell, how much you're gonna get. Gary reviews those contracts, and, and then, and then we bring them to you, and you approve, and they go out and sell their cookie dough. What we run into sometimes is, is, you know, we'll have a spur of the moment thing where all of a sudden at the last minute, somebody wants to raise money for stuff. And we are very particular about what fundraisers we allow to happen on school property. Because everybody, every organization wants to use our students to raise money. You know, we could do fundraisers all the time, whether it be the American Heart Association, the American Cancer Association, muscular dystrophy. There are all these groups that want to raise money, and they love to come to schools to do that. We do one fundraiser like that a year, and that's the United Way, because that's a Ponca City organization that supports all those nonprofits. And that's, and again, otherwise, we would be using staff time, student time, teacher time, to hand out those forms, to go, you know, one of the popular ones, I think it's the American Heart Association, does a jump rope fundraiser, where kids go, students go get pledges, and if they jump rope for so much, people give money. Well, again, you know, that sounds like a nice thing to do, but somebody has to do that. Somebody has to hand those form out, forms out to those students. Somebody has to collect those forms. Somebody has to count that money. Somebody has to turn it in. Somebody has to be responsible for it. And it takes time to do that. So, again, we, we allow fundraisers to support our students. And those organizations, again, have to, you know, they have to tell us what they're doing. Brenda, why don't you come up to the microphone?
Another thing we've run into with teachers, doing their own fundraisers for their classroom or for iPads or something, they tend to believe that if they do that fundraiser, that those are their personal items. They are not. Once they do a fundraiser using our students and under the name of Ponca City Schools, that is Ponca City Schools equipment.
I know in July or August, we get a list, yay long, from you, of all the organizations and the Booster Clubs, et cetera. Are there some you have cut out that we never see?
For the most part, no. The only thing that we do not approve, like Dr. Pennington was talking about, is for outside organizations using our students to solicit funds for them. We don't approve those. Because everybody, there are so many, it would become unmanageable at all the sites, because someone is always wanting our students, like you said, to raise money for them. So we have taken the position in the district that we support the United Way organizations because that money actually stays in Ponca City to help Ponca City students and Ponca City patrons. And a lot of the other money, if we do fundraisers for those organizations, the money leaves Ponca City. It doesn't stay here to help our people.
Last year, I think volleyball wanted to raise money for autism. We never voted on it, and...
But that's because that's an outside organization. That's cut and dried.
That's in the, our handbooks, that they can't use our students to solicit funds. That's in the book that is, is board approved. And it has, we have board policy with that also.
For years.
That's not a new practice. That's been there for years.
So what do we change? Thing they can raise money for is things that are already listed. If you pre-approve in September, whenever you do that.
No. What they present, each activity group presents a budget for their activity fund, because that's, like Dr. Pennington said, we want them to, but, you know, to plan and what they're gonna do for the year. Things come up in the year, things, expenses, you know, if they want to do something different or new fundraiser. At any time during the year, they just get their budget, amend it, we bring it to you all as an amended budget, and you all vote on it. We don't prohibit them from doing fundraisers. Basically, the only thing that we stop before you all see it are the outside organizations using the students to solicit funds.
Or from a new group or new fundraiser during the year that was not in the original summertime of ways?
No, we bring those to you all.
For instance?
And if, if a new group is formed during the school year, we have them complete an application for an activity account, and we create sometimes new activity accounts throughout the year.
Did you get one for the baseball player that was killed last year?
Who did that? But who solic, who did the...
I don't know. I just...
I think the baseball program...
The baseball program had a golf tournament, the Booster Club, and they set up for funds at their golf tournament, because that was their golf tournament and this Booster Club. They gave out flyers at one of our football games, but they could not collect any money at that football game. They only handed out flowers, flyers to say that we are gonna have donations at the golf tournament. But we didn't let them collect money at that football game. And we did have the Student Council who wanted to do a fundraiser, and we did not allow that.
Who didn't allow it?
The district. Because it is not, when you start doing, approving those type of things, then you have to open it up for everyone. And that was for, and you ha, you can't pick and choose on those of which ones that you want to approve and not approve.
Better, or that it's up to the Board to decide?
But that's soliciting funds for an outside organization, and that's against board policy.
And you can change your policy.
Change your policy. And also, like, when we had one at the senior high, not this year, but last year, when the Student Council wanted to do a fundraiser for a specific teacher, and we brought that to you all, and you all approved it.
That thing, Dawn, that I got you text, did you get that text? Explain that to them, can you?
Well, I haven't read it all, but I think it's one of, it's the...
I got some texts today, and I gave one to Dawn and Robin, because I didn't quite understand it.
It's the one I talked to you about.
And that I sent you the information on?
Yeah.
It was the go, the crowdfunding.
Yeah, the crowdfunding. I think that's what it is.
And what, and what those are...
The board, yeah.
Those have to be brought before the board.
Yeah. They can be brought to us, but they never have brought them to us to look at.
No one's ever brought them to us for approval.
I haven't seen any.
Those organizations do charge quite a bit in fees for, to do the work for them.
And nobody's ever brought one to them.
So if we vote for this, we're not eliminating things?
Oh, no.
I mean, Dan, if we do it in the right...
Yeah, we just, we gotta do it the right way. I mean, that's the, that's the issue with all this stuff. I mean, I know that there are circumstances where, you know, we're sympathetic to an org, to somebody outside who, outside the system. And, but again, you know, again, it's your policy, and we'll do whatever you want to do. But you have to understand that once you open that door, you can't pick and choose. You can't pick and choose that we're going to pass a bucket at a football game for muscular dystrophy, and then not do it for the American Heart Association, and then not do it for autism, and then not do it for cancer. You would have somebody wanting to pass a bucket at every, every athletic event that you have. And so, these policies predate me, okay? They've been in place for a long, long time, and my guess is gonna be that they're here because of that. Because, because Boards of Education, Board members, and staff were overwhelmed with these kind of requests. And, and so Barbara's shaking her head as a building principal, that, you know, you just got overwhelmed with it. And so, again, you know, you, you can take, you know, and again, it's whatever you guys want to do. I think that when we're using our facilities, and we're doing things that are our kids, our students, that the money we raise ought to go for our students. That that's where it ought to go. And 100% of it ought to go for our students, or as much as possible. And, and so, again, that's up to you. Now, what, the thing we're gonna vote on here in a minute, all this does is add language to our existing policy that specifically references what we call crowdfunding. GoFundMe is an example of that. There are others that are out there where you go on the internet, and you go to that site, and you say that, "I want to raise $1,000 to buy wrestling mats," okay? And so, that, that goes out on the web, and anybody who wants to contribute to that can do that. It doesn't just go to a specific group. It's, I've never been to a GoFundMe site, so I don't really know how they work. I've never contributed on one. But, but you could send an email out that says, "Hey, we've set up a GoFundMe site for the Ponca City Wrestling Club to buy a new wrestling mat. Here's the web address. Go on it and make your contribution." And then people can go online and do that. All we're saying is that to do that, you have to follow the rules on fundraising. That's all we're asking people to do, is follow the rules. And the rules are that you fill out a fundraising request, we look and see, does it meet the parameters of board policy, of the kind of things that the Board has said they'll approve, and then if it meets that criteria, then it comes to you, you guys vote on it, and we go on down the road.
But in the example you gave with the wrestling mat, there'd probably be nothing wrong with that, because we're not using students, we're not trying to collect money at a school function.
But we are raising that for the Ponca City Public Schools. But yeah, I would assume that we would approve that. Now, what I would tell the coach that wants to do that is, rather than doing that and paying the GoFundMe site a fee for raising that money, why don't you just have people contribute to the activity account? Or contribute to the district? That way, 100% of the money goes to the school for the use of whatever you're doing it for. If you go to, you know, when you do that stuff on the internet, they don't do it for free. They charge you a fee. And they have rules about how much money you have to raise, and if you don't raise a certain amount, you know, they, they set a deadline. You've got 30 days to raise the money. Then what happens to the money? If you need $1,000, you've got $750, what happens to that $750?
What happens to it?
That's the question.
I thought you were gonna tell me.
You know, on some sites, the site keeps it. Other sites, it stays there, and you can come up with another project.
You have to refill out the whole, go through the whole application process again with them for your fundraiser to get your original 750. If you collect over your $1,000, you have to fill out another fundraising application for the money that exceeds what you asked for. I mean, you can go out on the website, donors choose, there's lots of reviews, and some of them are not very favorable of experiences that people have had working through those. And with gifts and endowments, and what we've talked about is also putting a link on our webpage where people can make donations through a link, so we can, you know, make it easier for people to contribute if they want to.
You know, I think the advantage that those sites have, the idea behind them is, you know, you can get lots of people. Again, I don't know how you, how you know that somebody's raising money, but you, you know, you get an email, somebody's raising money for something you think is a good idea, and you send that email out to all your friends. And so, you can widen that path or that group that contributes to your cause. And so, you can raise a lot of money in some cases pretty quickly. Sometimes political campaigns have done that, where they raise lots of money pretty quickly. That's not who, what we do. We usually, you know, we, we don't raise money just for the sake of raising money. When we, when our students raise money, our Booster Clubs raise money, they have a specific purpose for that. It's not just to raise funds. We have a need that they're gonna meet. You know, I'm sure that, that you have businesses in town that tell you that they get tired of getting hit up all the time by all the organizations and all the organizations for schools and students asking for money. And to some extent, the rules you have in place are to kind of make that, kind of protect that, so...
And our community is very generous with our students. Very, very generous.
But again, if you guys want to review the fundraising policies, we can sure do that. We can set a session, and we can review them, but...
I just want to make sure they're not a closed door to, I don't want to vote on something that closes it just to something that has to be done for our school each year.
Oh, no, no. We've never had it that way.
We've never had that policy. And we've, and we tell people all the time, you know, you have to be careful about making assumptions and blanking statements. Evidently, somebody has said that, well, they don't approve anything after school starts. You know, what I'm gonna say is, is most of the controversy that I'm aware of, since I've been superintendent, is people who don't want to fill out the paperwork and abide by the rules. That's the issue that I see.
In fact, we're approving three amended budgets tonight. Fundraising budgets.
Yeah.
And we have a meeting at the first of every year with all the Booster Clubs and all the activity accounts. And this past year, we actually gave three different nights, so all the activity fund people could come, made it. Last year, we made it mandatory, because we don't, we tried to, you know, give them this information, and we talked to them about amending their budgets, and that we know things happen in the year that come up. And so, we, you know, let them know that they can do that. We offer that to them. And we just try to let them know what, you know, can and can't be done, but there are rules that we do have to follow and laws, so, but any time during the year, they can do that.
But the basic rule, that fundraisers have to be approved by the Board. If you are raising money for a school organization, or if you are using students to raise money for your organization, that those fundraisers have to be approved by the Board of Education. It's a state law. And again, the reason we have these laws, and we used to not have them, you know, used to, activity accounts just kind of did what they wanted to do, and, and Booster Clubs did what they wanted to do. But the reason we have these rules is because we had people who would go out and raise money for, you can put the name of the organization, baseball, basketball, wrestling, softball, tennis, golf, cheerleaders, high steppers, whoever it was. And when it came time to pay the bills, the money wasn't there, because they'd spent the money on other things. And unfortunately, even with these new rules that have been in place for probably about 18 years now, you'll still occasionally read in the newspaper where, where the treasurer for a Booster Club at some part of the state has run off with X number of dollars. And I think we have a responsibility to the people that we ask to contribute money, that we're following financial guidelines, and that we're holding the people who are collecting that money accountable. And we're gonna ensure that when somebody comes and, and you contribute $50 or $100 to them, that money's gonna be used for the purpose they told you it was gonna be used for.
Actually, does somebody review their stuff?
Brenda reviews it.
Review.
And also, we...
Actually, the minutes for 20, at least 20 seconds.
At least 20, okay.
And we also have them in their minutes of the Booster Clubs. They have to present that to their membership. They can't just, the officers get together and decide things. They have to present that to their membership, and it has to be in their minutes where they voted on and approved it. So we do collect those records and review them each year.
Okay. Do I have an emotion to approve or not approve six point two?
Is it approved?
Do I have a second? You said that.
Yes, I did.
Is there any more questions? Are there any more questions?
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Okay. Next on the agenda, six point three, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the application of, for the participation in the 2016 Summer Food Service Program for Children.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Number six four, six point four, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve an increase in full-price student lunches for the 2016-2017 school year.
You have in your packet information that shows you that this is a federal requirement, that we are required to make this price increase.
Move to approve six four.
Second.
Are there any other questions?
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Six point five, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following contracts and agreements. Do you want to do it individually?
Three each one.
Oh, you each one.
Three each one.
Three each one, okay. A is renewal of agreement with Burnett Security and Investigations Incorporated for security at the Ponca City High School for the 2016-2017 school year. B, renewal of contract with Burnett Security and Investigations Incorporated for courier services for the 2016-2017 school year. C, agreement with Beckett Brothers Wood Floor Systems LLC to provide repairs to the gym floor at the West Middle School. Total amount of repairs is $18,599.20. D, agreement with Lewis Associates Architects for Architectural Services for fiscal year 17. E, agreement with...
iXL Learning.
iXL Learning, which allows teachers to track student progress, print individual student reports, and create individual interventions for each student. F, agreement with Engage 21 Learning, which provides training and coaching for the implementation of product, project-based learning. G, this is a contract with Oklahoma Specialty Supplies for the purchase and installation of new lockers at Trout Elementary School. H, agreement with two fellows and a one-big-vehicle moving company to move Trout Elementary School back to its original site. I, agreement with Gary Bracken, attorney at law, for his engagement as attorney for the district. J, agreement between Galaxy Business Equipment Incorporated and Ponca City Public Schools for six district copiers plus supplies. K, agreement with Stanley for maintenance on district copiers and duplicators. L, agreement with Emporia State University Dance Camp for our 2016-17 high steppers to attend the dance drill team camp, June 3rd to June 5th, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve all those?
A through L.
A through L.
I've got a couple of questions, Judy.
Okay. Which one?
On A, I realize we're gonna, it's on a per-day basis, and we're gonna have six fewer days, so the cost should be reduced by six days. Taking that out, is it the same price as last year per day, or is this an increase?
The, the increase for cost of living, about 40 cents per hour, per man-hour. That's typically what he's, what he's been doing through the past years, but it is based on a day-to-day basis. We don't have school, they don't come and get paid. If we happen to use them for graduation for increased security, that may be in addition to, but it all works out about the same. Very close.
So it's not much of an increase?
No, sir.
Explain that to me. I'm pretty slugged. $239.20 per student, I'm paying that.
Every day there is students.
Just every day, and there is students.
Every day, we have, there are students, and they're on the job.
Okay. Next question, on D, agreement with Lewis and Associates. You know, we've basically discussed a few plans. All the buildings may not be there. When do we pay them? Wh- when do we pay them? After work has been done?
Yes.
So if, so if we decide to close a building, let's say, whatever the building might be, would they have already done some work on that building or not?
I don't guess I understand the question.
On a new construction or a remodel, you basically pay eighty percent before construction starts.
But when do you pay it?
As the, after they complete the work.
Depends on how far into the project you are. You know, so much ten percent, they could file... If we elect not to open the Anderson Building one of these days, cause there's a four, five, six hundred thousand dollar project in there that they will have to do architectural work on, would, would you stop them before they start it? Or would we have to pay them some and then if we decided to stop the building?
Their billing or their invoicing is based on the work that they do and it's separated out as such, so as they design, so they get paid for, uh, twenty percent or fifty percent of all the design work. They've done that work, they've put it on paper, they've created documents. They get paid for that after they've done it. And they keep going down until they get to the bidding part of it. If we bid, bid the job, then they're going to get a, a part of construction administration. So as they're working through the project, they're still getting paid for work that they are accomplishing at the time during construction. If it stops, construction stops and the rest of his contract is not fulfilled because of, of construction's being stopped, he's not getting paid for it.
So it would be who view to maybe tell them to hold off on certain things if you think there's a chance it won't happen? Don't start the preliminary architectural work?
Well, that's correct. Yeah, they're only gonna get paid for the work that I assign them to do. Once, once I tell them to stop, they're not getting paid for anything else. You know, typ-, I mean, you know, and Gary Bracken can tell you that we don't pay for anything we don't receive first in the school history.
But those architect agreements are loaded on the front end. I mean, you, uh, it's eighty percent before you get to the construction phase.
That's correct. Most, all of their job is done then.
Cause that's the majority of their work is drawing the plans.
But it's still up to you to, to start and stop them.
But the schedule's in the contract, it, it's near the end, so...
I guess the best example would be, Robin, let's say that we get down here in a little bit where we have an item on moving the four-year-olds to the Washington facility and the board decided tonight they did not wanna do that. Okay, well then, then we're probably, may not proceed with the renovation of that building, okay? But there is some work that Troy's already done to get ready for that renovation. He's already had some drawings to, uh, how to, you know, what we need to do to run the plumbing and how to do all that. So the, so the work that he's gotten done, that he's completed, he's gonna get paid for.
We've already paid him.
Yeah, we've already paid him. Now, we own that, those plans, they're ours now. And if we decide to come back and do that a couple of years from now, we already have that already done. We wouldn't have to repeat that.
Correct.
We'd probably have to review it for code changes and those kinds of things.
Okay, I'm good with it. Does all the questions I had?
I need a second.
We need a second?
A second.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Six point six, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve accepting the corrected bid total for the administrative office seminar room.
Reggie shouldn't have sat down.
I got this was coming up. This is just a matter of correction, I talked to Gary Bracken about it. When we approved the seminar room upstairs for bid, you guys approved the bids and we put on there the total. But a correction needed to be made because there was one bid package that we did not accept and it was for four thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. So you actually approved the wrong total. You should've approved the two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five eighty-two fifty. That would be that less that forty-three sixty. So we were just making this correction in your board meeting so you know that that was the actual number that you should've approved first time. Cause we accepted all of them except that one package. Does that make sense?
Motion to approve six point six.
Second. Any other questions?
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Consideration of and vote to approve or not approve accepting the bids for the Washington Elementary School classroom restroom remodel.
I've got a question on this one, Brett. Your turn again. I remember reading correctly on the property minute notes, the GMP's two hundred and ninety-two thousand. I'm almost positive it was two hundred and ninety-two thousand. Yet, for six months, we've been talking about a hundred and ninety-two thousand.
The very first, yet, correct, it was about a hundred and ninety-some thousand, yes.
That's a fifty percent error in the estimating.
Well, remember...
Something didn't do a very good job.
Well, they based it off of a square footage number. And then once you got into it and we found out all the, the code requirements, uh, of the fire marshal and some of the other things that came up as we started going through it, it went up.
Who does our estimating?
Our construction manager.
Fifty percent error? That's not very good.
Well, like I said, it was just a, just a, just a estimate on square footage. They didn't know what was all gonna go involved in it.
We haven't added to the building.
No.
I mean, we haven't even started anything yet. Now, they may have walked through it to see what had to be done.
They've done a lot of investigations since that a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that's what, that's what went up.
It's a pretty big error. I mean, I, I hope our other projects don't have that kinda error loaded into them.
It gets difficult whenever you do remodels, cause you don't know what you're gonna find until you get into it.
Yeah, it may even go up from this.
Yes, sir, it might.
They may find asbestos. You know, I'm...
You very well could.
Old building asbestos is a killer. But fifty percent error in an estimate is just not very good.
Well, like I say, it's hard until you get into it. If it's square footage, number's pretty easy to do. But a remodel is very tough to get into and there was more involved in this one than we thought. Especially when the fire marshal gets involved.
You know, I don't know if it would've changed our decisions on pre-K, but that's an extra hundred thousand dollars out of building fund, I assume, is what it came in from.
Correct. Yeah, cause they had no, they had no idea what they were getting into once, until they got into it.
Who is the construction manager on that one?
Rick Scott Construction. Rick Scott.
Motion to approve six point seven.
Okay, I have a question. So have we accepted a bid or you've just accepted the bid?
It's what you're doing tonight.
What you're doing tonight, accepting the bid tonight.
What is the bid?
Two hundred and seventy thousand.
I thought it was two ninety-two.
Okay.
Well, that may be the total package from your property minute, mi- minutes.
The, well, they didn't get...
Bid sheet's on page one twenty-six.
The estimated GMP is two hundred and seventy. They didn't get one bid in, so they added in the two, the twenty-six thousand, but they feel like that's gonna come way down, so it should be even cheaper. So right now, the estimated GMP is two hundred and seventy. Next month, you would, next month...
You share out of the GMP, two seventy? I think it's two ninety-two. Just in the, I was reading in the minutes. Two seventy. On this form, and it may be, it's still a heck of an error. Okay.
And like I say, it should go, it should go down from there because the, the one bid that they didn't get in, they estimated it at about twenty-six thousand. They think it's gonna be a whole lot less than that.
Is it the extra money or from the two seventy going down? Going down from the two seventy?
Correct. Now, the bids came in at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Once you add the CM fees and, and the bonds and insurances, it came, it comes to two hundred and seventy thousand for the estimated, uh, guaranteed maximum price. So part of those bids, part of that hundred and ninety thousand dollars, there wasn't a bid for some fire sprinkler and it was estimated at twenty-six thousand. They think that's gonna come in less, so they just threw that whole number in there knowing that it'll come down.
I think those prices they were giving us was contract, or the, to repair to do it, it's two hundred and, two hundred, well, it's a hundred and ninety, that would've been the, they, they went back and made it to two-ten, so really the other parts wasn't added in there.
Yeah, they're estimated on just construction was a hundred and ninety and that's what the bids came in. So maybe that...
Is that what you're thinking, Robin?
I was a bit confused, yeah.
I'm thinking we've been working for six months that it was gonna cost us just under two hundred thousand to move into that building. Now it's gonna be closer to three hundred thousand.
Well, like I said, they were estimating the work at about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars and that's what the bids came in. Then you're gonna have to add in their stuff. They don't know what theirs is until all the bids do come in.
Any more questions?
Nope.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
A six point eight vote, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve a recommendation to utilize the former Washington Elementary School for the establishment of a pre-kindergarten center.
Second.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Six point nine, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve changing the grade span of Garfield, Liberty, Lincoln, Roosevelt, Trout and Woodlands Elementary Schools changed to be implemented for the two thousand six, twenty thousand sixteen, seventeen school year.
So we, what we're doing here is we're saying these sites are gonna be K-five sites. Union will stay a pre-K-five site because of the specialty, special education classes that we have at Union. That's where our three-year-olds go and, and, uh, we have some four-year-olds in those, in those, in those programs for our, um, disabled...
But the reminder of the four-year-olds will go to Washington.
Training Skills Lab is over there.
Okay. And so, but we'll have some of the region at Washington.
One last question. Will the students that are in the Union geographic area, pre-K, still get to go to school there?
No, they'll go to Washington. This, this, all this does, we have to, we have to do this for the training skills students. Is why we have to have this designation.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Okay, six point ten, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve resolution for schools and libraries, universal services, E-Rate for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions?
E-Rate is a federal program that gets us discounts on, um, telecommunications, um, internet connectivity, uh, sometimes various pieces of equipment. Uh, we, we do this every year and so we have a, we, we apply, we list what we would like to do and, uh, and then we apply to the federal government and, and we see what kinda discounts we're gonna get. Uh, we probably get, how much in discounts each year, Jason, would you say?
It's gone down quite a bit due to the fact that it's changed the, uh, how they pay the phone service, I don't know if everyone pays any more, it dropped it by twenty percent every year till it's finally gone. But it used to be that based off our free reduced lunch count, we get, we get eighty percent off of different programs. Use that and with the Oklahoma Universal Service Fee, we get a lot of our internet and those type of things almost supposed to be free. I don't know if they're supposed to pay for it, but then for internet, uh, for another year, they're still gonna pay some, phone bills and those kind of things, and those will be off of us after that. But that's, that's all it is, is we, we get the forms filled out, it's turn the stuff into the FCC, which is, USAC is part of the FCC. And then goes, if you look on your telephone bill at home, um, you'll see you have a, you have a service fee on there. That money then goes to the FCC, the FCC reflects that money, gives up the back sources, and they're showing us. And all this is, is you're saying yes, great, except the filing person.
We don't gotta pay for it twice? We don't like it.
Well, it's a great program. I mean, it's, the schools would not have internet access without the Universal Service Fund. I mean, we couldn't afford it, we couldn't afford the things we've done with wireless communicat-, tele-, wireless communication and all those kinds of things. We just couldn't do it if it weren't for, for the E-Rate program.
Move to approve six point ten.
We already have it done.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Six eleven, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the amended Ponca City School District calendar for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. This is where we turned, um...
We've taken six instructional days and we're turning those into professional development days. One of those days will be professional development for all staff, certified and non-certified. Five of those days will be professional development for only certified staff. We, uh, and it says in the commentary, there's a couple of reasons why we're doing this. We're not offering any professional development in the summer as a cost-saving measure. This allows us to get the, the staff's professional development we believe they need. Also, in the past, we've done lots of PD during the school year where we hire substitutes and they go into, maybe we'll have PD for forty teachers and twenty of them will have professional development in the morning and they'll be out of class and then, uh, another group of teachers will come in in the afternoon. This allows us to cut down on those substitute costs and the fact that we can't find substitutes anyway. And then it also means those teachers will be in class teaching those students rather than out of class that day. So we think it's a win-win. It also is a little bit of a budget savings because, uh, we will not be paying the salaries of support personnel that are, that are nine-month support personnel on those days, cause they won't be working, so...
It's a tribute to the newspaper that pre-reads some of the meetings, cause I've received several calls. Have those days been selected yet?
Yes, and they're on the calendar, I believe it's in your packet.
Okay. Is that on the website?
They will be once you guys approve it.
Okay.
Start of school, same, stay the same, end of school stays the same. Christmas break, uh, Thanksgiving, they'll stay the same.
Move to accept six point one one.
Second.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
I don't unless you guys do.
Shouldn't they have an executive session? Okay, now I'm gonna skip down to six point fifteen, vote to approve or not approve renewal of the following assistant principals for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year.
Move of approval?
Second.
Question? Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.[1702.37]
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Number 6.16, vote to approve or not approve recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
I have seconded.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Do we have any new business?
Yes, we do. We do. And one of them, we talked about earlier today. We have, I have a request for a additional fundraiser that I'm bringing to you from Josh Allen. And you may, some of you may have purchased discount cards from the football team. They usually circulate those in August. They want to do that in May now. And so, they want to do it at the, here at the end of the, at the end of the school year, at the beginning of June. And Mr. Allen did not get this to Brenda until, I think, Friday morning of last week. So, we recommend that you would approve that.
Do I have a motion to approve that?
Why is it going up the farm now?